A little vibrating. Cell phones vibrating. Everybody good? Ready? Good evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Tonight Pastor Todd Forrest of the Fountain Hills Christian Center is here with us. Pastor?
Shall we pray? Lord, as we close out another year, I thank you for the many blessings that we have enjoyed this year. I thank you for our community, for the leadership that is here. Lord, I pray that you would continue to guide us and let us have a spirit of peace and joy in our community, even as we celebrate this season and the coming of Christ and so many festivities and the giving of gifts and spreading good cheer. I pray, Lord, that Fountain Hills would be a place that is special, a place that people are drawn to, not because of a fountain, but because of the people, Lord. And I ask that you would help our council to govern diligently, to be guided and directed. And, Lord, we say thank you once again for the opportunity and the privilege to live in this great place that you have given to us. In your name, Lord Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor and Merry Christmas. All right. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Leger?
Thank you. Uh, let's see. I don't have any report, but I would like to congratulate Amberly Dubrowski, who's just been elected Chair of the PNC. And Susan Dempster has just been elected Vice Chair of PNC. Well, with two women running it. Wow. Uh, now we have, I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Cecil Yates, who's gonna give us an update on MAG.
Excellent. Uh, two weeks ago, we had the Regional MAG Council Meeting, various mayors and council folk talking about some things going on in town. As you've all been hearing, tourism, uh, the economy for Arizona is doing very well. One thing the City of Phoenix is working on jointly with Arizona Tourism is a direct flight to Montreal, Canada. What some folks don't know is Arizona is number one in the United States for tourism dollars out of Canadian dollars, even at seventy percent, seventy cents per dollar. That's pretty good. Sorry, that was a bad joke. Overall, things are going well. City of Phoenix is working with City of Avondale and City of Goodyear trying to have a sustainable water source. And other than that, our own, and she couldn't be here tonight, but Freda announced her formal retirement. And so although she's our attorney for an interim basis, she did take that opportunity to announce that we're gonna be sad to see Freda go 'cause Freda sits on the MAG Council and my committee, Domestic Violence, as well as our council. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Um, any other reports from anybody that didn't tell me? No? Okay. So, um, now I'm gonna go on to a proclamation declaring January 2018 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month in the town of Fountain Hills. Whereas the Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life movement presents an ideal opportunity to help bridge the gap between our local community, government, and law enforcement in a positive way. And whereas our local schools are facing unnecessary tragedies where warning signs are placed on social media or observed in person but are not being reported as serious threats or cries for help. Whereas our youth need to be empowered to report concerning posts or comments to law enforcement or school representatives and to help spread the message that it is okay to care enough to speak up, stand up, and save a life. And whereas the Textitip program in Fountain Hills enables our youth and citizens to contact authorities when there is concern about another safety. And whereas more than 3,000 students from 300 Arizona schools will learn the message and create communication programs in their schools and communities. And whereas Arizona schools, students, parents, educators, police departments, and community organizations are encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our community safer for all children and adolescents. Now therefore, I, Lynda M. Cavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim January 2018 as Speak Up, Stand Up, Save a Life Month and ask all Fountain Hills residents to join me in encouraging youth to take action when their peers are in need and partnering with local leaders in simple, life-changing interventions. And here with us today is Sarah Ruff, representing. Hello, Bob. Join me up here. Wow.
I'll take a picture.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is meaningful today because I'm here representing middle school students and high school students who are going to be gathering in January at Grand Canyon University to come up with ways to decrease substance abuse, cyberbullying, and teen suicide in January. I know the town of Fountain Hills, towns and cities all over the valley and all over the state are struggling with this. And this is something families know about intimately. We're seeing it on the news. So thank you for declaring this proclamation because it does matter. And it's really important that we have city leaders, law enforcement, school teachers, and students all working together to combat this problem. So thank you.
Thank you for heading up this program. This is for you? Wow, Burns without a camera. I can't believe it. Oh, and Amberly, I mentioned you before at the beginning of the meeting that you're the new Chair of the Planning and Zoning. Congratulations. Presentation by Epcor relating to scheduled mainline replacements in the Sunridge area. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you, tonight, we're gonna have some representatives to give an overview of a capital improvement project that will really make lives a lot better in our community. As you're aware, we've been having these water main breaks in the Sunridge area happen once or twice a year. Last year it happened, I think, in around January. And there was quite an impact on both the Sunridge Golf Course but also the residents who live there, both with some disruptions in service. And Epcor did a great job of trying to get that, um, that service restored right away. We have with us tonight Jeff Stook, who's the Director of Operations, and Andy Brown, the Director of Engineering, who are gonna provide an overview of a capital project that will finally fix this problem. And by the way, this problem is one that Epcor inherited when it was Chaperal Water Company who actually did all these installations of water lines in our town. With that, I'll go ahead and call upon them to come speak before the council and the public.
Grady, would you like to introduce the man in red on your right?
Yeah. Uh, he's been getting a lot of strange looks here. Our, our legal counsel, Freda Beesman, is in New York City this week with her grandchildren. And with us, we're delighted to have Scott Holcomb, who is an associate from the same law firm. And he actually does a lot of these types of events. He actually went to Fountain View Village to help entertain the seniors there as Santa at three o'clock today. And he decided, you know, he asked if it would be appropriate. I said, "I think people would love to see Santa provide legal advice to the council tonight." So that's what he's here for.
Mayor and council members, my name is Jeff Stuck. I'm an Operations Director with Epcor Water and have been involved in overseeing the operation of the utility here since February of 2012. My colleague, Andy Brown, is our Engineering Director. And so Andy and I have both been working closely together to address a number of issues here in the service area with the water system. And in particular, we've been looking closely at Sunridge. So I would like to give you a little bit of background on the Sunridge and the water mains that we have in that particular area and some information on the breaks that we've experienced. And then hand it over to Andy and let him walk you through what we would like to do in terms of a planned approach, a more proactive approach to dealing with some of these failing mains before they become a huge disruption to the community. And so with that, as background, we have two 12-inch water mains that run along the length of Sunridge, all the way from the intersection of Palisades to Golden Eagle. And they're, those are real vital arteries for moving water around in the community to make sure that we can get it to all areas, north and, and east and west of Sunridge. And so those are very important arteries to our distribution system. Those water mains were installed in 1990. And so in terms of age of water pipes, these are not very old water pipes at all. But as you know, and I'm sure your constituents know, we've had a number of main breaks along Sunridge that turn out to be extremely disruptive. And from our business perspective, very costly to repair because of the amount of damage that's done to the roadway when those mains fail. And the water washes away pavement and sidewalk. We've been working hard to quickly make repairs wherever they happen, but recognize that that has not been as quick as I think many in the community would like. We've had periods of time where one side of Sunridge has been shut down for several days, up to a week at a time as we're making these repairs on this segment of main, on the two mains that run down Sunridge. The breaks so far, we've looked back to approximately 2008. And we've spent over $725,000 fixing main breaks on Sunridge alone in terms of these two mains. And, and most recently, some of the ones that the town manager mentioned, more close to the Palisades intersection, were pretty expensive main breaks, $150,000 to $200,000 to make repairs, which is rather expensive in terms of that type of damage that's done. And so we're here today to brief you on a plan that we would like to put together and work with town staff so that we can make replacements on this main that we're seeing is having some issues that Andy will discuss here briefly. But replacements in a planned and scheduled fashion so that we can do them at periods of time that are the most opportune to make those repairs and are much less disruptive to the community in terms of the road closures and the other work that's going on. So with that, let me hand this over to Andy and let him get into some of the details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so as Jeff said, we've, we've had a problem with the mains here and we're looking for a solution. I mean, we wanna get out ahead of this. We want a proactive approach rather than waiting for the next, the next main to break. So what we've done is we, we started off, rather than just get into a project, and of course, it's, it's gonna cost, it's gonna be a sizable investment. But before we jump right into it, make sure we understood what was causing the problem. And we suspected and have confirmed that a big part of it is the way that the original mains, their PVC mains, the way they were installed by the, by the developer in the 90s. And the bedding, bedding's real important on, on the PVC mains to make sure that, that pipe's properly supported. And the bedding around these, these mains is inadequate. And that's probably the number one cause that's causing the breaks. And it's, it's allowing longitudinal cracks to develop and then eventually these pipes burst. But in addition to that, we, you know, just to make sure we had a good understanding of the system, the first thing we wanted to do is just get in there. We, like Jeff mentioned, we've got two pipes. And I know these, this map is, diagram's a little tough to see from where you're sitting. But there's two lines in the road and they represent two zones in our distribution system. We wanted to make sure there's no interconnects. We have as-bilts from the developer and unfortunately, they're not real consistent. So we had to go in, make sure that system's operating as efficiently as it should. We, the first step is we did expose some of the pipeline in the Palisades-Sunridge intersection location here. But it was just over the past week. And the good news is, we have confirmed we did not have any interconnects between the two lines, which would have caused us some problems. And then secondly, we thought maybe we had some capped lines. Some of the drawings were showing that, which wouldn't give us a, you know, a redundant feed in the distribution system. We also confirmed we didn't have cap lines. One thing we did find, though, is we've, we do have sections of lines that are, when the pump's shut off, they're, they're draining and then it develops air and then we fill it back up. We've gotta get rid of that air. So first thing we wanted to do and is underway right now is install some air release valves on that line. And so we've got the line set up where, where the system operates the way it should be and efficiently. And there's a lot more detail to that, but I won't get into all that right now. And of course, the next step is regardless, these mains have, because of the, the way they were installed, need to be replaced. And so the plan is, and as Jeff mentioned, these lines run from Palisades up to Golden Eagle. But the area in focus right now is from Palisades up to Desert Canyon. And that's what's represented on that diagram. We have Palisades at the bottom and Desert, or, um, Desert Canyon up at the top. Anyway, there's about 55, not counting the lines that have already been replaced during breaks. There's about 5,500 feet of 12-inch main that needs to be replaced. And we, we wanna replace it with 12-inch ductile iron pipe, which is obviously much more sturdier than the PVC. And so we've got a, we've got a couple charts here. That first one is representing the breaks that Jeff talked about and the money invested today. And not just the dollars invested, but you know, just the impact to the community when something like, you can't really put a price on that. But then down at the bottom is essentially, that first item is the work we've done, we're doing right now. That's underway. That'll be wrapped up this, this week. And then the rest, there's, there's several items listed, but essentially, it's that pipe replacement I'm talking about going up, going up Sunridge Drive. And that represents about a $1.2 million investment. That's, that's our estimate today. So our plan is, we're getting ready to go into our 2019 budget cycle. We're gonna look at that. We're, we're definitely gonna program this project in that budget cycle. It's not in our 2018 budget 'cause we, when we put that together, we didn't have, have this figured out. But we are going to look at the possibility of moving some projects around, see if there's some additional funds available. I mean, $1.2 million's quite a bit of money. But if there's any way we can pull it forward into 2018 and then like Jeff said, working with the town and your schedules and, you know, traffic restrictions, et cetera, get it done in 2018, we definitely will. But as it stands today, we're gonna put it in our 2019 program. But we'll know more about that over the next, the first few months of the year.
Questions from council? Councilman Yates?
Thank you, Mayor.
Who lives in?
Yeah, I am a resident of Sunridge Canyon. And I appreciate you coming here. When this first happened, I was the one who reached out on behalf of the community and, and asked, "Hey, what can we do long-term?" And you guys were very responsive. And so I appreciate that. And so do the almost 2,000 residents of Sunridge Canyon. First off, I presume this information will be readily available on your website? Or can we have this so that we can put this out there?
Yes, we can get you, we can get you this information.
That'd be tremendous. I appreciate that. And you already mentioned about pushing up if feasible. Is it a phased project in the sense that even if you start in 18, what's the overall timeframe that you think this would take if all things? And I'm in construction and development, so I appreciate your answer.
Yeah, so I mean, ideally, we'd do this as, as one project. But I mean, then you're talking, you know, you've, you got that.
That's how I go home.
Right. You know, a half mile or so of, or more of, uh, street you'd have disrupted. Uh, so that's something we're gonna have to talk about. I mean, but the easiest way to do it is just get it all done at once. And that's the way we would put the project together. But of course, we can, we can, we can talk about phasing it, too. So I don't, I guess I don't have an answer. On, the preference would be to do it all at once, but if, we've gotta work with the different parties to make sure.
Again, not to hold your feet to the, but what, how, if you were able to do it all at once, how long would that whole project take, you think?
So, Councilman Yates, I get myself in trouble for all the time.
Absolutely, I understand.
For committing to things, but I, it's, I would say it's a six-month project.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Good answer.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So when you guys went in for a rate hike, what, two years ago? You were also allowed, allowed the rate hike as well as you were handed, and this, this is coming off the top of my head, $5 million to do upgrades to the system. Are you going to utilize any of those funds to help upgrade this system?
I'm not familiar with that unless Jeff might be.
He's referring to the SIP.
SIP. He's referring to the SIP.
Councilmember Brown, yeah, that, that is the, that is the SIP and it's, it's, in essence, pre-identified projects that are brought before the Corporation Commission. And they, they reach agreement and then you execute that work. And so this was not included in that. These, these main replacements were not included in that. But still, work that needs to be done.
Thank you.
Councilman Tolles?
Thank you, Mayor. When you're dealing with a project of this magnitude and you have a commercial entity in that area, such as the Sunridge Canyon Golf Course, how do you go about working with that business to try to do everything possible to make sure that they can continue to have a successful business and to prosper? And is there any type of loss-of-business insurance claims that are available to businesses such as that if this is, as you stated, some sort of, it sounds like the original developer did not, did not structurally build this correctly, that this is why we're dealing with this now?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Tolles. I think the example in terms of the coordination is what we did on this first phase that, that we're working on now. One of the first things we did was visit the golf course and ask them. We told them, "We need to do this work and we know it's gonna disrupt and have some lane closures in the intersection. Is there a better time than another for us to do that?" And so we were able to coordinate with them. As Andy said, you know, depending on the approach that we take to this bigger project, we certainly are gonna need their input. It's not our, our goal or objective to impact their business in any way. And, and I would like to think that we can find a way to do all this work and accommodate them running their business also. In terms of claims against the developer, I, I wouldn't know one way or the other whether there was anything there that, that could be acted upon.
Anything else? Anything else? Nope? I just have a comment. From the time you started and you took over, I know there were a lot of problems. And people in Fountain Hills, there were certain neighborhood that didn't even realize that, well, one woman would call me and say, "When I take a shower, if my neighbor is washing clothes, I get no water pressure." These people lived for years thinking that this was normal, that everybody in town was like this. And I know you stepped in and, and you got that resolved. And these people now have adequate water pressure. So I, I really appreciate a lot of the personal time that you've taken out, especially you, Jeff. I know I called you a lot. Yeah, you know that. And, and there were so many people that had large bills and they thought you were just overcharging them. And then you went out and you helped them realize that there was a leak in their irrigation system or something was going on. And I know you helped quite a few of them also with the heavy bills if they couldn't afford it. So I just wanna thank you for that. I know this is a big project. It's gonna inconvenience a lot of people. But I just wanted people to know that you have done a lot of, a lot of personal good things for people here. I know you also put in that well when I took the tour. And I don't know if you wanna explain about how we didn't have that additional well and we didn't know about it. Could you just speak to that for a second?
Certainly, Mayor. When, when we took over the system in 2012, there is the, what we call the Shea Surface Water Treatment Plant. That's on Palatial Drive. And it's a 15 million gallon a day surface water treatment plant that's supplied by a single 24-inch pipeline that comes from around 150th Street on Shea at the CAP Canal into the community. And so we were worried that that was a single point of failure that could in essence, put the town completely out of water if there was an issue with it. We have one well that could provide a small amount of water, about 2 million gallons of water a day. And we had another well that had been abandoned by the previous owners and worked to equip that well. And so now that well is operational. Between the two wells, we have the ability to get around 5.3 million gallons of water out of the groundwater. So if anything ever did happen to that CAP line, that we would be able to continue operations seamlessly to the customers. And in fact, a couple of weeks ago, we were sweating it out. We had a valve on that CAP pipeline that stuck closed. And so we couldn't put water through it. But we were able to start the wells up and continue to provide water service to the community while we made the repairs over several days, something that wouldn't have been available to us in the past had that well not been redeveloped.
Okay, and I wouldn't have been aware of that if I hadn't taken the tour and also been communicating with you. So thank you for that. Any other questions or comments for either Jeff or Andy? Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Appreciate your time. All right, and all this information will eventually get on the town website. So everyone will be, everyone will, will have a lot of information before this starts. Do we have any calls to the public?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then, before we go on to our consent agenda, I just wanna let you know that if anybody came for item number seven, that has been pulled from the regular agenda at the town manager's request. And that will probably be coming back at a future time. Also, two, three, and four have been pulled off the consent agenda by Councilman Magazine. So we will be discussing those in the regular agenda section. So for now, we only have one item on the consent agenda. And I'm looking for a motion to...
So move.
And a second?
Mayor's second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote? Viv says we need a roll call vote.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger? Councilmember Legay? Mayor 7-0.
Thank you. Now, we will start with item number two. Consideration of approving a first amendment to contract C-2017-104 with Firework Productions of Arizona LLC extending the terms of the contract with up to four one-year renewable options, and increasing the amount of the contract to 20,000, not to exceed 95,000 in total. Councilman Magazine?
Did staff want to say anything about this before I go on?
Well, did you want to start and explain why you pulled it off?
Yes. Let me make it very clear. I am not opposed to the Fourth of July. I am not opposed to fireworks or celebration. I just question whether or not it's wise financial controls to commit to a four- or five-year contract. And would like to ask staff whether or not we could do it annually, or for two years, or whatever.
Rachel?
Well, if I may, just on that question, I can tell you, each of the last few years, it's taken a lot of effort to try to get a contract out on fireworks. They... Because of the nature of fireworks, we're always looking at the liability. And so, it's been quite a bit of work to try to get these done. In fact, I remember the very first year, it was like just before almost the Fourth of July that we actually got the legal, from both the company and the town, degree to the language that was in the contract. That's what it is. We require a lot to ensure that our town is protected liability-wise in the event of something that might occur with fireworks. This here, we're also trying to have a multi-year agreement, so we don't have to go through and do this once a year, and go through that and endure that. Because it's very difficult, because we cannot have an event take place without the contract signed in place. And I'll go ahead and turn it over. Our community services director might have some additional details to share on this.
Thank you. To piggyback on that, understanding that the contract doesn't commit us for a five-year period, the contract is renewable for up to that point. So, it is a case-by-case basis pending. We want to continue with the contract, and the vendor does too. What it does is it takes out the legal legwork on the backside of renewing it year in and year out with a review process and whatnot. So, it's a... To say it's a quick and simple renewal, and therefore, we're not expending staff time or resources to go through those hoops each and every year. That's the intent of this type of contract.
I probably missed in the fine print, but is that a locked-in price?
It is a locked-in price up to that point. So, should we choose to back off of that, or should we choose to change our scope of our fireworks production? We can do that. We essentially set that budget with them to say what we have and what we plan to use that year. I will say, it also does not diminish what we intend to do in terms of sponsorships, and seeking support that way as well.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Go right ahead. And any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Consideration of approving Cooperative Purchasing Agreement 2018-080 with Compan Incorporated in an amount not to exceed 90,000 to replace playground equipment at Golden Eagle Park. Councilman Magazine?
Yeah, the reason I asked this be put on the regular agenda is not that I oppose it, because I will support it, but I discussed this with a town manager, and he explained, rather than just approve 90, $95,000, I thought it was important that we understand why we're doing this. And so, I'd like to ask staff to respond to that.
I'll go ahead and turn it over to the community services director to explain the importance of this particular contract.
Sure, I can do that. What I did is, I actually threw a couple photos together that I'd like to show you. I think this illustrates the point better than I can probably explain it. I will move through this pretty quickly, so that... This is the master plan for Golden Eagle Park. Hopefully, everyone's familiar with the playground structures at Golden Eagle Park. This is a photograph of the structures. You see that there is quite a bit of sand and whatnot. This equipment was installed somewhere between 1993 and 1997. So, doing some quick math, that's about a little over 20 years old or so. And our capital reserve... Excuse me, our replacement reserve study recommends that we replace that, this equipment, this year in 2017. Funding is in place for this, and it is a proactive strategy to replace aged equipment before failure happens. We certainly don't want to be on the backside of something, whether it's injury or worse. So, we want to be proactive about that. This is also a two-part replacement. We intend to replace the structure. This is something that we are looking at replacing it with. This is a... It's a climbing structure. It's more of a free-form structure, as opposed to what we're traditional... You know, traditionally seen as slides and kind of more formatted play. There'd be other items accompanying this, filling the space. These are some of the other items that we're working with Compan to use. This is the format of what the park will look like. It'll use the space a little better. It'll use up more space and allow more activity going on, and more kids. In addition to the play structures, we will be removing the sand and using a porn-placed, rubberized walkway down there, as well as wood chips. Wood fiber will replace the sand. Not only is it more sanitary, but it is also safer. It has a higher grade for falls and things like that. Sand, right now, has a fall height of about four feet, for safety reasons, and the wood chips would have a fall height of about 10 feet. So, it's just safer for our kids and our community as well. So, both of these pieces would take place at the same time, and installation would be expected sometime in late winter, early spring.
Mayor, my understanding is that some of it is not ADA compliant at this time. Is that correct?
That is true. Sand is not ADA compliant. The wood fiber chips would be.
Okay. I just... Mayor, council, I just thought it would be wise to get this information on the record, for people to hear why we're spending this money, how necessary it is. And that's why I asked it be put on the regular agenda, and I'll move approval.
Any other...
I'll second.
Comments from council? Okay. Have a second?
Yes.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
Thank you.
Consideration of approving the Professional Services Agreement, C-2018-041, with Hunt Design and Associates Incorporated, the amount of 95,500 for providing professional services for the assessment and design of the town-wide municipal wayfinding sign program. Marissa? Did you want to say something first, or...
Yeah.
Good.
But I will say this.
Good.
I'm troubled by this recommendation, and that's why I had it put on the regular agenda. And Craig is sitting here and can correct me on this, but my understanding is that the capital fund, the CPI, has something in the neighborhood of $5.5 million. And now, more than was planned, is likely to... It'll cost more than planned for the fire station, and 2 million for Adaro Canyon. And further that... And so, that will deplete it to... It could deplete it to less than $1 million in the CPI. Additionally, I understand that next year, with 50% of construction sales tax going to the CPI, that would equate to something in the neighborhood of $360,000. This is the lowest it's been in many years. And as much as I would really like... I think signing the town would be terrific. I don't like the ones we have. They're old. But nevertheless, we're talking about almost $100,000. And Marissa, can correct me on this. I believe that's $100,000 just to design the process, or design the locations, those kinds of things.
Correct. Yeah, it'd be to design the locations, and then the colors, the structures, logo, and so forth.
And what do we anticipate the cost to be to build out?
Honestly, it's going to depend on what is proposed, the types of signs, the materials, the number of signs. So, I mean, it could vary quite a bit. I do know that we have budgeted some money as well this year for the design of the wave... I'm sorry, the gateway entry signs. Those would then be included in this. There still would be some funding left for that. And I have been working with Director Weldy on next year's budget, trying to get an estimate. Part of the scope of their services would be to provide us an estimate in March, so that we would at least have something to put on the budget for next fiscal year, have an idea, and also to provide a phasing program.
That would... Whatever it is, would further deplete, as I understand it, the amount of money in the CPI. I mean, so if we assume, for example, that the CPI is at a million, plus another 360,000 from construction sales tax, we're further depleting that amount. So, that's why I brought it up, because as much as I'd like to see it, I think it's a mistake at this time.
Councilman Yates?
Mariska? I sit on the committee, so I know what we went through. What was our line item budget that we had for this topic that was approved in the budget?
So, we had two line items. One was for $100,000 for designing the town-wide wayfinding sign program, which is the design for the locations and what they would look like. And then, there was an additional $100,000 budgeted for the three gateway sign design for those. And so, a total of $200,000 that we could put towards the design.
So, the total scope includes all those items you just mentioned, and this bid came in at what?
95,500.
And again, I know the answer, but could you give the background of the vendor who won this bid?
The vendor is Hunt Design. They're out of Pasadena, California. They've been doing wayfinding designs since the 1980s, which is about when this started. They've done work ranging from small affluent communities throughout California, Idaho. They've done Goodyear here in Arizona, but they've also done the Statue of Liberty, the Golden Gate Bridge, Disneyland, which is a big one. They're now doing Disneyland Hong Kong and Disneyland Beijing. So, they're very experienced and well-versed in making this happen.
Madam Mayor, if I may, and the other bids came in around where?
The other bids, one came in at $189,921, and the other one came in at $187,946.
So, again, we have the most qualified at the least, and it's like 50% less than everybody else, correct?
Correct.
And then, if you will indulge me, and this may be a Grady question, capital improvements, what do we... I know what the answer is, but what do we use these for?
For improving capital investments throughout town.
And they're budgeted?
They are budgeted. So, I did look at the history of the discussion on this topic, and I can provide dates if you want. I don't know.
If you may, this is one of those projects that... You know, a lot of these capital improvements aren't necessarily must-haves, but this is part of a long-term plan that we've been working on for decades. So, I just see an incredible value with this, and one of the best firms... I mean, their claim to fame is they invented municipal wayfinding. And for us to have them at this cost, it doesn't mean we're physically doing the work, but you've got to have the plan. And it's more than just design, isn't it? They're actually consulting us, getting community involvement, and, you know, pointing out what's important and how this really works.
Correct. They'll be doing, not only meeting with our committee, our team that we've created, but getting public input, discussing things with council, and helping get everyone on the same page. So, consensus building is a big part of this. And then, also providing services in the long run to help guide us on fabrication and design, or fabrication and installation, sorry, to make sure that this turns out exactly how we have determined as a community that we want it to look like.
And Madam Mayor, finally, Marissa, will they just give us one sign example on how to do it?
Yes, sir. They will be giving our team quite a few. They said maybe in the teens, 10 different options to choose from. The team were not working in a bubble. We are discussing things with different people throughout the community, bringing those ideas to the table to pick out different features that we would like to see. And then, to council and the public, they would be bringing maybe three or four different options, and again, going through the process to get consensus on what they would like to look at in the locations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Any other council comments?
Mayor, if I may, just a point of clarification. So, the $100,000 is for design and assessment of where we should be putting our signs. Is that correct?
As well as assisting staff with selecting the fabricator and installer. That includes the bidding out for engineering and fabrication and installation. And they would help us not only choose which firm to do that with, given their area of expertise, that would be beneficial for us to have that input. And then, also helping to oversee the fabrication, installation, making sure the signs look like what we'd like them to look like.
And I know it's hard to determine, because we don't know the number of signs that we're looking at, but do we have an approximate cost or any type of project we can compare it to? I'm just trying to get a sense. We're spending... Look, $100,000 to design and assess where we should put signs, to me, seems a little excessive. Although the bid came in a lot lower than others, I guess it's just kind of an expensive business. With respect to assessment, signage in this town should not be that complicated, frankly. And we're looking at... I thought this whole project was about replacing signs. So, if we're replacing signs, to me, we would have an understanding of where the placement should be. And for someone to be contracted to consult us on where we should be putting signs, where it's pretty obvious, I find quite interesting. With respect to the cost, so ballpark figure, once we spend $100,000 for someone to tell us, "This is what a sign should look like, and this is where it should be", what's it going to cost us with respect to fabrication, materials, and installation?
So, this is outside of my area expertise, but Director Weldy happens to be here, and this might be more in line with what he might...
How convenient. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We have estimated, and this is a ballpark, because we certainly do not have the numbers, that it'll be approximately 150,000, and that is on the high end. And again, that's just a number that we've put together in preparation for this budget cycle. We do not yet know what the final number will be.
So, that includes putting the signs, the material, the sign itself, putting the sign together. How about installation? Are we installing? Is Public Works installing, or are we contracting that out?
No, sir. The fabrication and installation would be contracted out.
Okay. Well, I'm very much in favor of supporting the notion of wayfinding. I think that's something that Councilman Yates has advocated for many years. I'm just really concerned about the cost of this on the front end. The assessment complex seems more complicated than it needs to be. I mean, we're looking at replacing signs, and, you know, not too long ago, we developed those very nice signs. I think Councilman Yates may have been involved in that, and others in the design, those blue signs in the median. To me, that would sense... I sense perhaps that would be the design. Wouldn't we want to be compatible with that? And wouldn't we want to then just replace the existing signs we have? So, I just think it's a little excessive on the front end. Thank you, cost-wise.
Anyone else?
Grady Hinton?
I'd just like to comment. Councilmember Legay brought up a good point. However, the one thing I do want to say is that if you look at a lot of the signs that we have throughout the town, I believe that we have more signs than we really need. And I believe that this firm is going to identify that. We have firms that are actually promoting different businesses, kind of directing people to these locations. And I think the wayfinding signs idea is, this company is one that I know is going to be sensitive about not having visual clutter in our town. So, they're going to be probably coming up with signs that are going to be more visible, but fewer of them, and they're going to be done in such an attractive way that they can attract, direct people to where they're trying to find, you know, attractions or specific types of, like the town center and the town hall and the library and schools and things of that sort. So, I understand where both Councilmember Legay and Councilmember Magazine are coming from on the cost factor. This did go through quite a bit of vetting before we got to this point tonight. I can recall having had this discussion at council retreats, as this was an item at one retreat where it wasn't really received well. And then, I remember most recently, the retreat was, everybody was on board with it. And then, we went through the capital improvement process, and this was approved as part of the capital improvement budget. So, I understand where both sides are on this, but at the same time, you know, we're here tonight for some sort of decision on this matter.
Councilman Tollis?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that a lot's happened in the last year, and I think that we're in a period of time right now in this community, and as a council, that we are looking at budget shortfalls. We're looking at a lot of issues coming down the pike. We're looking at a potential primary property tax. We're asking the residents to make a decision on. And while I'm in favor of wayfinding signs, and I actually was on a committee with Councilman Yates back 15 years ago or so, with the Chamber of Commerce and also our mayor. And the signs for the downtown center were established. And right now, I feel that I would be in agreement with Councilman Legay and Councilman Magazine that we just need to put the brakes on any spending such as this. We'll have opportunities to come back at this, and we'll have an opportunity to evaluate the pulse of our community as to where they want their funds to go. But right now, I think we should hold off on this.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. The 95.5 certainly is a large number. There's no question about that. But you look at the scope of work that we're buying, that we're receiving for the money, for the investment. I see, when I first looked at this, I was not for it at all. I thought it was too much money. I didn't see the value in it. But after listening to what all they are going to give us for the money, I would hate to think that we would let this slide for two or three more years and then come back with a $200,000 design fee. And the company that you have, that has given us the best price, certainly does have a great resume. So... And I clearly understand Councilman Legay and Tollis and Magazine, and I understand the shortfall in the town, but I see value in this, and I will be supporting it.
I'm going to agree with Councilman Brown. I think people understand that you spend money. money, that you've put aside for certain items, and I think for the longest time, people look at those brown signs coming into town, and it makes our town look shabby, I mean, it's just like having potholes, people didn't want the potholes and the bad roads, 'cause they said, you come through town and it, and it just doesn't, just doesn't look nice, they want their town to look nice, this is gonna replace those brown signs, which really you are, are unusable, as Grady said, a lot of them are behind hedges, you can't even see them anymore, we are in a unique situation geographically where we've gotta get people from Shea to come into the center of town, people think that Target is our center of town, they start, I think they've done studies that say people will go about a mile, and then if they don't see another sign, they think they've gone the wrong way, and they turn around and they go back, you know, we need to get people to the fountain, we need to get people to the events in the park, and I, and I really honestly think that people want our town to look nice, they like it the way it looks now, they like the upgrades that we've done to the park, I think people want signs, I've never heard people say that they didn't want those brown signs replaced, and they want the town to look nice, and I think it would be also helpful for all the events that we have, because it's going to be helping people find the center of town and leave town when they're done, which is always, also a problem, you see, every time we have a, a big chamber event like the art fairs, there's big paper signs and they, all kinds of A-frames all over the sidewalk, this way to Shea, this way to Shea, I mean, how does that look for a town that we, we put out temporary signs like that, we need something nice, we need to be proud of our town, and signs are part of it, when we go to other towns, go, go through Scottsdale, nice-looking signs, and that gives you the impression of a nice town, and so, I would be supporting this. Anybody, Councilmember Porter?
I just don't feel like this is high on the must-have list for me, right now, I, I think this is high on my post-property tax win list, there's a lot of things like that on there, I think I agree with Councilman Tollis, a lot of things change in a year, we've been scolded tirelessly for every dollar we spend, which is rightfully so by the public, and I do agree that having nice signs is a sign of a great community, and I would love to have this, but when you look at the overall expense, I, I don't see this as a public safety require, need, I don't see it as just an absolute must-have currently, I, I want it after we get the more financial stability after hopefully a property tax passes.
Councilman Yates?
My last two cents would be, I think we're getting, again, top-quality value, they look at this as art, it's comprehensive, they showed us examples, I wish we could show all of the examples that they brought us, and they're working in communities in California, very high restrictions, Berkeley, some other communities, and the fact that they do have a presence here in Arizona was tremendous, they utilize the back of the signs, it's more than just a nicety, which I appreciate, you know, some of the input, thinking it's an economic development factor, and to the mayor's point, so many times, and Dennis, we've sat on these meetings where they come down Saguaro, come down Palisage, or even Fountain Hills Boulevard, get barely a half mile, and they think they're, we're in the wrong area, if, if we could quantify that, we could probably get a return on our investment for this, so comprehensively looking at this, saying that if, on the high end, it's, it's a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, and we got the bid at the best company who does this, I mean, their tagline is, they invented wayfinding, municipal wayfinding site, so, all in at two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand in today's dollar, I don't think you're gonna get a better value for that, I appreciate everyone's input, I, I really do, but this is something long, long, long overdue, our, our businesses, our friends, friends and relatives that, that come to town, this is responding to Vision Fountain Hills, to our SPAC, all these types of things, so I think the timing is right, and we, we've been given this great opportunity to work with probably the best vendor in the United States at the lowest possible price, I just would hate to pass on this opportunity at this time, so.
Mayor? I've got Councilman Magazine.
Well, it's okay if Councilman Legay wants to go first.
I can certainly defer to the Vice Mayor if you'd like to compliment.
No, he's not Vice Mayor anymore.
I'm not Vice Mayor anymore.
He's Vice Mayor Brown.
Oh, Vice Mayor Brown, it's amazing how things change around here.
Well.
All right, very good, I was in favor of a way, wayfinding program for some time now, and I supported it in our retreat, I supported it in our capital improvement approvals, as I stated earlier, it was the process, and kind of listening to this argument develop and evolve, it sounds like this is the process involved in doing this type of project, bringing someone on board, making an assessment, and there's a cost associated with that, and there's a cost associated with the signage, and it sounds like this is gonna be carried across two, two budget cycles, eighteen, nineteen, probably nineteen, twenty, if not twenty, twenty-one, the way this project has been going, so, it sounds like I'm flip-flopping, but I'm not necessarily flip-flopping, I'm kinda going back to, I'm in favor of the project, it was just the process of getting there, so this has been an education for me, question I had in terms of funding, Craig, we have this infamous downtown development fund, and many of these signs that we have are gonna be, as the mayor stated, the goal is to direct folks downtown, in that it's, it's a dedicated fund, and there's a concern from Councilman Magazine in terms of depleting the capital fund, is there a possibility that a portion of these signs that are in the downtown area could be funded through the downtown development fund?
I believe that would be correct.
Okay, so that kinda takes the edge off the, the financing for me, so with that being said, I will be supporting this project.
Let me go to Councilman Magazine.
First, I wanna thank Councilman Yates for his efforts in bringing this forward, I've heard several councilmen mention that it would be really nice to have for the town, I think there's a long list of things that would be really nice to have for the town, the last several budget messages we received from our past two town managers all said the same thing, which was, we're in bad shape, we need to find another source of revenue, that rings in my ears, and the wording on those three messages were almost identical each time, we need to find a source of revenue, the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission has said the same thing, we need to find a source of revenue, I don't think this is a wise move at this time, and so, and I, I'd love to see the signs, and the way Councilman Yates describes them, I think they'd be beautiful, I think they'd be attractive, I think they'd enhance the town, and I can think of other things that would enhance the town as well, the mayor said, the ones we have look shoddy, going back to the messages from our town managers, if we don't find a source of revenue, then shoddy may be an understatement in the future, so therefore, I'm gonna move that this item be deferred, that consideration of this item be deferred until after the next budget.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second, eh?
Okay, any other discussion, do we have a roll call?
I have, I have a little bit of a discussion, thank you, you know, I think we're in a stage in this community where we have a, we have a referendum for the voters to determine what direction this community's going, we, we either, and I've heard this many times talking to constituents, some of our community would prefer our community stay a bedroom community, and, and anytime the discussion of economic development, anytime the discussion of tourism comes up, it comes across as a negative to them, because they want our community to be quiet, and they want a peaceful community, and they don't wanna create Scottsdale, they don't wanna create the Scottsdale signs, they don't wanna create the, the business vitality, so I think we have a referendum coming up in May, if, if we ultimately do have that on the ballot for a primary property tax, and the people at that point will decide, and if they decide to pass a revenue source on the primary property tax, we will have the funding to beautify areas of our community that we so choose, to make it, make it attractive, and make it so that by no means do we wanna have any, anything that looks anything less than excellent in our community, so I just feel, this will come up again, we can discuss it, it's not completely dead, it's a great idea to have great signage, it's just the timing factor right now.
Councilman Yates?
My, my only two cents is, so everyone knows this, this is not a beautification project, yes, they will be nice, and, and the brown signs aren't even functional, much less shabby, so, with, with all this, a sustainable revenue source, which I, I more than agree with everybody up here, but you still need all cylinders firing, you, you still have to look at the municipality comprehensively, when Strategic Plan, Vision Fountain Hills, and all these different groups tell you, these are, these are what we want Fountain Hills to be, and I agree with you, I don't wanna be Scotch, I don't wanna be Fountain Hills, but I think this definitely is part of that piece to the puzzle, to make us all we can be, no, a lot of these things are not must haves, I, I agree with all of you, but I think it's an opportunity that, that we can move on and, and get incredible value, deferring, you can use that forever, and, and keep saying, well, let's defer till the next cycle, or the vote, or the next thing, we still have a fiduciary responsibility to folks and, and keep operating, and, and that's how I feel, so, but you have a first, Dennis.
I, I think that people will vote for property tax because they like the way the town looks, I, I don't, I don't think you have to say, well, you're gonna have these shabby signs, and you're gonna have this, it's not gonna look good, if you don't vote for it, see, I, I, I take the opposite approach, I like to make the town look beautiful, and say, you wanna keep it this way, do you enjoy the town like this, do you enjoy the parks, do you want, you enjoy the, the way we fixed up the roads, I think people will look at that, and they'll say, I like the town the way it is, and this is the way I wanna live, so I will, I will vote for property tax, so I don't think making the town, I don't think holding back what I've heard here is, is a, is a, is a good bid on this, and a good opportunity, is gonna make people change their mind either way, I really don't, I think people are proud of their town because of the way it looks, they will vote for a property tax to keep it that way, 'cause there's an awful lot of things that you could say, we don't have to have, hey, let's not have any movies in the park, we'll save money, hey, let's not have ballet in the park, but then what kind of a life do we have here? I mean, we like it the way it is, that's why we live here, so I think that is gonna energize people to support their town when that comes around, I have a, could you wanna reread your, restate your motion, so there's no confusion?
Sure, I move that we defer action on this agenda item until after the next budget.
And can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Tollis?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilmember Legay?
Nay.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Nay.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Madam Mayor?
Mayor three, four.
Councilman Yates?
I move to approve professional services agreement C-2018-041 to Hunt Design and Associates, Inc., in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars for providing professional services for the assessment and design of the townwide municipal wayfinding sign program.
Second.
Any other council discussion, roll call, please, Beth?
Councilmember DePorter?
Nay.
Council, Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Nay.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Tollis?
Nay.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor four, three.
Mayor, now you know why I wanted to put it on the regular agenda.
Madam Mayor?
It's almost eighty degrees.
Oh.
Remember what I told you?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go on to items five and six, there'll be one staff report, speaker cards submitted for items five and/or six will be called during the public hearing number five, with that, I will open the public hearing to receive comments on Resolution 2017-33, a major general plan amendment related to the proposed Adaro Canyon Phase Two residential development proposal to be located at 13300 North Eagle Ridge Drive, case number GPA 2017-02.
Grady, and?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Rogers, our Development Services Director, as you're aware, the next three items are all part of his staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, this is an application by Toll Brothers for a major general plan amendment affecting the property at 13300 North Eagle Ridge Drive, also known as Adaro Canyon Phase Two, property's currently owned by MCO Properties, and Toll Brothers will be buying it once all this entitlement process is complete, tonight's hearing is specifically related to the major general plan amendment, and the applicants are asking for Town Council's approval of that only tonight. This slide shows the general plan's future land use as it exists today, the current categories are highlighted in the red boxes, the Adaro Canyon Phase Two area is primarily classed as single-family, very low density, with the exception of the area that was the, this is kind of the beige area there, which was the potential one hundred and twenty-five apartments slash hotel rooms, but that apparently had, had fallen through. This is a slide shows the proposed general plan, future land use plan, as you can see, most of the property will be designated as open space, the residential areas will be mostly SF LDR, which is single-family low-density residential, which matches the development densities that Toll Brothers are currently developing in parcels one and seven of Phase One, the remaining residential area will be designated as SFMDR, which is single-family multi, or medium-density residential, which will match the development densities that Camelot is currently developing in parcel eight of Phase One. The overall effect of this will be to redistribute the already allowable density of about three hundred and forty-three dwelling units, it's tentatively reduced right now to about three hundred and forty, across the broader area and further back into the canyon, and the, and in fact, it's because this shift to the residential density affects more than eighty acres, that the requirement for the major general plan amendment was triggered. This major general plan amendment is just a first step, the reason it's being heard separately this month is because a major general plan amendment must be approved within the same calendar year that it was advertised, so we're up against a deadline, and if we aren't able to finish it this month, we'll have to start the whole process over again in January. After the new year, the full development proposal, including the PAD and the preliminary plat, will be brought before the P&amp;Z Commission on January eleventh, after that, council will hear the, and consider the whole proposal, the PAD, the preliminary plat, along with the two development agreements, or one development agreement, one settlement agreement, with Toll Brothers and MCO on January sixteenth meeting. Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval, the staff also recommends that council approve the major general plan amendment as presented, representatives from Toll Brothers and MCO are both present to answer any questions, and the applicants, Toll Brothers have indicated that they have a presentation of their own that they'd like to present.
Okay.
That concludes mine, thank you.
Presentation? Let's have the presentation.
There's first.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Wendy Riddell with the Law Firm, Berry Riddell, sixty-seven fifty East Camelback, it's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Toll Brothers, I do appreciate the council's willingness, staff's willingness to work with us and allow us to bring this general plan amendment forward, keeping with this calendar year, and so I'm gonna speak to the general plan amendment, but give you an idea of exciting things to come. So I think this council's already somewhat familiar with Toll Brothers, but they are a publicly traded national home builder, they've won numerous awards, you can see just a few of them are highlighted here, first in home building, three years in a row, and then even specifically on a home that they developed in Adaro Canyon Phase One, actually won Home of the Year, Best Home Designs, it's actually pretty exciting, that's on a national basis, if you haven't seen the home, I will tell you, go tour it, it's, it's really pretty cool. So the request that's before the council tonight- So the request that's before the council tonight is effectively to convert 167 acres from privately held land to preserved open space. So ultimately, there will be 51% of this project area devoted to open space. To give you an idea, what you see on the left is what's currently entitled, that lower corner, today. And obviously, we're not here talking specifically about the site plan, but when you look at the top corner, you can see comparatively how much additional open space we're proposing to preserve. This proposal also allows us to include the trail connection, I think even sooner for this community, and we think that's also a real opportunity. We are not requesting, to be clear, any increase in density through this general plan amendment and even through the PAD. So again, no increase in density at all. This is really about the reallocation of open space. Again, we're not talking quite about the site plan, but I wanted to give you an idea of this is what's to come. And it shows how the units are really kind of clustered together, again, preserving more meaningful open space. This request also, I think, allows us to provide the opportunity of diversifying housing stock with an award-winning home builder. Provide scenic views preserved by an increase, increase in this contiguous open space and then again, the orientation of the homes lower down in the, in the canyon. And then finally, I present this slide just to show to you that Camelot Homes, what you see in pink, we do have a letter of support from them. What you see there in blue is Toll. Obviously, they're supportive of the request as well. We also have a letter of support from the Copperwind Resort. We did host a neighborhood open house. No one attended other than MCO and ourselves. So we're not aware of any other interested parties in particular. We are fortunate to have a recommendation of approval from your staff as well as from your planning commission. And with that, I respectfully request your approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilman LaGee?
Thank you. Senator Dell, you had mentioned the trail connection, which is something that is very important to myself as well as many people in town of Fountain Hills, particularly the fact that we've been paying, we've paid millions of dollars for our preserve and it'd be nice to have access to our preserve. You made the comment that this project, the way it's planned and the agreements that we're still working on, that we may have trail connection access sooner. Could you elaborate on that?
Certainly.
The sooner piece.
Mayor. Councilman LaGee, we're, we're working hard to get to the sooner phase. So I think as soon as Toll has the ability to get the remaining entitlements approved, of course, they're anxious to move forward and develop this property, which is effectively going to bring that spine road all the way up to the trail access. So it's the, as soon as we're able to get in there and develop it, I think that opportunity to the trail connection comes even sooner.
I know, it's probably too early for you to commit to that, but any, any dates in mind?
Mayor.
Bob raises his hand.
A previous development agreement had a safety net of 20, was it 2020?
Just for 2020.
2020, is that, is that our target?
Mayor, I think we hope to beat that.
Okay.
But I can't, I can't commit right now.
Okay, so we're committed to 2020, but your, your goal is to beat that?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Do we have speaker cards?
Mayor, we have one card. Paul Gilbert.
Okay.
For your record, my name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street, Phoenix. I represent MCO. We're obviously in enthusiastic support and I have nothing cogent to add. Thank you.
Okay. We didn't even need to put the light on. Any other comments? Councilman DePorter?
I would just add that, I mean, you had me sold at the idea of going from the mixed large custom hillside lots to more smaller, single-family, just for the idea of that last slide about diversifying our housing stock. I think that's something we're all look forward to doing in attracting younger citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
All I can say is what I've seen is incredible, beautiful. My grandson's decided which one he wants and it's inspired him to study hard, which I told him, stay in school. And someday, this could be yours. So if you can impress a 10-year-old like that, it's really done something.
They're an easy client to represent, so.
Councilman Magazine?
I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. I too am in favor of the diversification and we're talking probably two years away maybe. Do you have any sense as to the price range?
Thank you. Mayor, councilmember, that's a question that you might understand we're reluctant to answer at this time.
Well, you understand why I asked it?
I do.
Because if we want it to be diversified, we want it diversified not just in the size of the homes, but we'd like to have, have them as affordable as possible so that younger families can afford them and move in. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
I think I read somewhere in here during that, I can't find it right now, because there was quite a few pages of this, where you estimated that there would be more families. I forget the number, was it 70 or I can't remember what the number was?
Mayor, I don't know that we quantified specifically a number. I can tell you that, that is our objective and that's the target, is to bring more families to Fountain Hills.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
Two things. One, thank you, Wendy, and a little shout out to the overlook also by Toll Brothers. I was honored to do the ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago. Beautiful product and that's in Fire Rock. I know it's not on the agenda, but a shameless plug nonetheless. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2017-33, the Adaro Canyon Phase Two, major general plan amendment as presented.
Mayor, we're still in the public hearing.
I apologize. I rescind that motion.
Save it.
Sorry, Wendy.
Okay? Any other speaker cards? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Consideration of Resolution 2017-33, a major general plan amendment related to the proposed Adaro Canyon Phase Two residential development proposal to be located at 13300 North Eagle Ridge Drive, case number GPA 2017-02. Any further council discussion? And now I will request a motion.
Mayor, so moved?
And a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Okay. All right. And now we go on to consideration of contract C 2018-08 with Dancing Construction LLC Incorporated in the amount of $4,558,000 for the construction of fire station number two relocation and authorizing the expenditure of an additional $600,000 from existing capital funds. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council. The item before you is obviously for fire station number two, for the relocation of it. This location has been determined to be the ideal location in terms of service delivery. When you're dealing with life and death matters or fires, response times are really essential. And as you're aware, having gone through this discussion through the capital improvement budget, the issue is currently, station one is taking a lot of the, the brunt of the service calls and we're not really meeting our, our obligations or commitment to the response times that we need to do. So this project will really help us with that. It's a, it's a great project. The, the sad thing is here, and it's, it's a big deal, is unfortunately, right now, the construction is really hot in the valley and we're seeing that labor costs are just really causing a lot of capital projects to really escalate in, in costs. A number of our neighbors, we've talked to them and they're, they're seeing this with their capital improvement projects, that their costs have gone up 20, 30% from what they anticipated, primarily because of labor costs, which there's really appears to be a shortage. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Justin Welly, our Public Works Director, who has a presentation set for tonight. Oh, you do not? Okay, well, you have some comments then.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This process has been considerably long, obviously discussed numerous times with Mayor and council and residents. We believe, based on the bidding process, that this is our best opportunity to move forward with this project due to the, well, instability of cost in the future, not to mention the response times that were mentioned by the town manager. We also recognize that the price is considerably more than we would have liked to have come forward with. However, we would like approval for this so we can move on with this and get construction started. I will certainly answer any questions if you have any.
Questions from council? Speaker cards in the public?
Mayor.
Okay.
Quite a bit to say about it.
Okay.
Here's the vice mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, we're $600,000 more over budget than what we should be. And yes, we definitely have a labor shortage in the construction industry in the state of Arizona. Thank goodness it's getting cold up north because of a lot of those construction workers will come down here and, and winter with us. We've lost a lot to the fires. We've lost a lot to the hurricane. We've lost a lot due to the laws changes. And, and I see, I see that every day, that we've got a, an increase in, in price of, of labor. But I think, as I stated when we approved this project, that we don't need to build a monument. And that, and the architects continue to design and continue to build and continue to add to it and, and I, and I'm, I'm going to support this. But I have to say, I think that this could have been dialed back to where we could have kept it in budget. And I don't see any effort at all from the architectural firm to help us do that from day one. And, and I've, and I expressed my feelings about it when we approved it and it didn't do any good whatsoever. So the $600,000 that were over budget, and once again, I'm going to support it because it is a life safety issue for the town of Fountain Hills and the citizens of Fountain Hills. But I still feel like that we could have done better with the design and the materials that are specified and kept it in budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Councilman Magazine?
I'd just like to follow up on the vice mayor's comment. And I, I hear from a lot of folks outside of Fountain Hills, when you say you live in Fountain Hills, I go, oh, Fountain Hills, meaning everybody's wealthy. And we've got that kind of a reputation throughout the valley. You know, I do a number of art shows. I hear it all the time. And I've said to a couple of council members lately, that I just get a feeling that architects and others say, oh, it's Fountain Hills. They can afford it. And whether it's accurate or not, I see the vice mayor shaking his head, no.
He shook his head.
I'm sorry, you don't agree with that?
I don't agree with that.
Okay. I'd like to hear anything you...
You know, I'm, I'm not ashamed to live in a town of Fountain Hills where people think that we're affluent. We've got 26,000 people here that live and work, commute in and out of town, that are proud to live here, and I'm proud to live here. And, and I don't mind, I don't mind the valley thinking that Fountain Hills is affluent. We are about as level-minded, as, as solid a group of people as I think there is in the entire valley. And I'm proud to be here. And I don't, I don't see having the rest of the valley feel that we're affluent has, has added anything to the cost of this project. But now, I think, as I stated, I still think we could have dialed the project back and kept it in budget. But it was too late. We're too far down the road. The $600,000 will turn into a million, million and a half if we don't go ahead and move it forward. Because we're, we'll spend another $400,000 redesigning it, we'll lose more time, labor's going to go up, material's going to go up, mainly because of the natural disasters that is, is occurring in the United States. So I just have to say, it's time to move it forward.
Mayor, if I could just follow up. I don't disagree with anything the vice mayor said. I'm proud to be living in this town and I, I don't care whether or not people think we're affluent. I just don't want us taken, taken advantage of, that's all. You are much closer to it than I am, given your profession. And if you don't believe that's the fact, then I'm satisfied. I just, I have, I've heard it and I just want to, I want us to be aware of the fact that people view us a certain way and I don't want us taken advantage of.
Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Just thank you for doing this, because I know this was a very long process. To echo what everyone's saying, it's not so much how they perceive us, but it's, it's our bidding process. And I know everyone out there has heard this, this council many times on some of these projects, talk about what's called value engineering or designing, you know, to, to a specification without, without the glory. Councilman Brown, the mayor and I even went down to the state legislature, asking them, is there a better way that we can bid this out to, to do this? And we try to echo this. So we're relying on staff ultimately, is when you put together these scopes, to kind of keep that echo. And then the challenge to all of us on council when these projects come in, is ask those questions about value engineering. Is there another way that, that we can do this aesthetically? It's still pleasing, but you know, the, the cost is much less. So it's part of the, the process, but I, it's, it's great discussion. And I think in, in answer to your question, that's more of it is, in the past, some of our bidding process has been highest qualified bidder instead of lowest qualifying bid. And just that little thing can, can change a bunch, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Councilman LaGee?
It's, in continuing this conversation, which is kind of a little off on a tangent, I think what a lot of contractors do when they start this process is they look at our budget. Isn't it ironic sometimes that what we have budgeted is usually the starting point for, for most, most of the, the bids? I'm not happy at all with, with the cost and the most recent surprise with the increases, but you know, we've been involved in this rodeo for a long time and as the vice mayor mentioned, this is a matter of public safety. And I think when we first started talking about this, this fire station, you know, we were at about two and a half million. And then we kept talking about it and there's three million. Now where's it at? It's at four million. So I'm not happy with the, the cost and the increase in the cost, but I know that it's a matter of public safety. And if we don't pull a lever tonight, we're probably going to be looking at four and a half million, five million a year, a year and a half from now. So I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? If not, looking for a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any speaker cards?
Mayor.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
Discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the cul-de-sac concepts to address the closure of Technology Drive. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, at the last council meeting, the Public Works Director and I came back with some, two concepts regarding the permanent closure of Technology Drive. This was under the report from town manager. There was no ability for the council to take action, but we did receive some direction on potential design concepts. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our Public Works Director, who's going to walk you through some design concepts that, that we heard input from the mayor and council at that meeting. So, Mr. Welly?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Based on information that staff and the town manager received, we've prepared two new plans, but we've kept a third plan in there. And so the first plan right here, as you can see, it meets some of the requests by the mayor and council in regards to removing the masonry wall that was originally proposed. We've added a couple of berms, as suggested by Councilmember Brown, and we've added some basic shrubs, boulders, and a few small trees.
And the, and if I may, the, the mayor had indicated, based on one of the slides that we showed at the last council meeting, I believe it was Stan Crest, you know, that she would like to look a little bit more attractive like that with some trees and vegetation, shrubs and such. And then the vice mayor also said, well, you know, instead of a wall, we can put berms up. It'd still have the same effect, it'll look more attractive.
Correct.
And then one of the other things that staff did, you recall, we had a scupper. It was like a concrete drainage channel that was put in. So based on trying to keep costs down, staff also included the possibility of having like river rock or a riprap, which would look more natural in the, the new design concepts that we brought you. which would look more natural in the new design concepts that we brought to you tonight. And then the other thing that Mr. Welley was probably gonna say, and I'm probably, sorry for saying this now, but to keep the cost down as low as we can on this, the staff is gonna do, public work staff is gonna do the finish work. So we were gonna have the staff put the granite in, build the berms. Did that in reverse order. Build the berms, put the granite in. And we would have a nursery put in, some of the vegetation. But Mr. Welley is gonna describe the difference between Concept One, which he just showed, and then Concept Two, and then Concept Three. So I'm sorry, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Concept One again has trees and shrubs and some boulders, the berm and the granite. Concept Two eliminates the trees and eliminates the shrubs and basically replaces them with some cactus.
It's a desert landscaping. That wouldn't require irrigation.
That is correct. And so there are the two. And we can take a brief look at the third one, which we had brought to you in the past. But if we go back to one, the mayor had asked for it to be more aesthetically pleasing, similar to the improvements on Sandcrest at Hampstead. The challenge with that in this particular location is that we do not have any irrigation. Our nearest irrigation supply is actually in the median on Saworo. So there would be a cost, and a rough estimate on that cost to get irrigation to this location from the median is gonna probably be about five thousand dollars minimum. And again, there's, and it's all dependent on the soil conditions under Saworo. With the second plan that we are proposing, the cactus do not need irrigation. And in time, not unlike other areas that are filled in or there are some improvements made, there will be some native and self-sewing of seeds of the native plants that will come in eventually. That will not be for a while, and it's dependent mostly on rain. Self-sewing seeds obviously plant themselves, but they do need water to germinate and grow. The third plan is what we had originally proposed with the masonry wall eliminating the sidewalk and eliminating any trees or any shrubs in there or adding any boulders. Concept One is going to be really the most expensive one. And a rough estimate, based on some written estimates and staff doing the work, this one is going to be about thirty thousand dollars to complete. Concept Plan Two, depending on the decisions that are made in regards to the size of the cactus and the quantity, we're still talking about twenty-five thousand dollars to complete that. And again, keep in mind that Concept One does not include the irrigation. That would be a separate price. And Concept Two does not have any irrigation in it at all, nor a cost factor for installing that. So that is what we have. And I'll certainly answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Do you have questions before I go to speakers?
Yeah, I'm just curious. What was the cost on Concept Three?
Concept Three, and I don't have that number in front of me, but it was in excess.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, it was twenty-five thousand dollars. That was for the masonry wall.
Thank you, Mayor.
Speaker cards, Bo?
Phyllis Kern followed by Sherm Abram Hamsen.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and Santa Claus. I'm glad you're here. Here you can help. I just, my suggestion is let's just leave the gate there, leave it locked. We don't have to spend any money here. I've been hearing this concept tonight on everything that you've talked about. You wanna save dollars. So my goal is just either lock or open the thing. Open would be the wise, common sense thing, but I haven't heard that tonight. But I'll leave it locked. And why, you know, why disrupt it? Friday I had the privilege of going over there, talking to the industrial people that own property. And I'm ashamed they're not here tonight. I mean, they are so angry. I mean, they just, one party told me, they said they've had two incidents over there where the ambulances have sat at the gate trying to get inside to where they had incidents where they needed them. So they lost time getting them over to where the guys, where they were basically saving them from a heart attack, so. But common sense doesn't lie in this mentality right now. It's just, you know, gun hole. And my feeling is just leave it the way it is. It's been there for seventeen years. There's no really, no reason to change it. We've got a bond issue of some sort coming up in May. You know, let's see what that brings us. Let's see where the people want to spend money at. But I think you're spending money foolishly right now. So my goal is either leave it locked or open it up. I'd even provide the key for you. Thank you.
Sherm Abram Hamsen?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you know, I've been out of town a bit and I'm just starting to wake up. You all are aware that I live across the street from this gate. And from the day one that my wife and I have moved into Mirage Cove, we've been hearing this dialogue on a regular basis. The last meeting we were at with the common council, you approved the "finalization," quote-unquote, of the gate. And the following Monday morning, I walked out of my house, getting ready to leave, and there's a gentleman there walking over to the gate. And I said, oh, you parked your car in our driveways. Why are you here? And, well, we're going over to do the work to resolve the cul-de-sac. I said, oh, fine. I was pleased to hear that. The only point that I wish to make tonight is that let's just get it done. You know, this is, I hate to think about how many times this has been before the council, many times. And it doesn't need to be that way. Let's just do it and be done with it and maintain your integrity of your commitment to what you've already done. And as a retired lawyer, I could probably go on beyond the three minutes, but I quit.
Okay, I think we also got some letters from people from Mirage Cove. I think everybody was copying on them. Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Comments from council? Any? I mean, I, okay, my comment is I don't like the wall because I wouldn't wanna look at a wall if I lived there. I mean, I'm okay with number two because it seems to look nice with the desert landscape and we don't have to worry about it with irrigation and we save money on that. And it seems like the least expensive and the most prudent way to go. I guess if I lived there, I'd wanna look at something nice. And it looks pretty nice the way you've designed this. So I don't know. How does everybody else feel? Anybody have a comment? Anybody wanna make a?
I'd make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve Concept Number Two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Yates?
My two cents are, although I appreciate everyone's input, here is an example of it's not in our strategic plan. It's not in our vision plan. It's not health and safety. This is a nice-to-have, not a must-have or not part of some bigger project. I appreciate you putting these together. I really do. Because I know that what you have provided for us is incredible for twenty and thirty thousand dollars. But this is an example of how not to spend money. We can leave it locked. We agreed to leaving it locked. That will accomplish the goal. But to spend another twenty, thirty thousand dollars so that we feel that's the, gonna end some discussion about this, I just think that is not spending money wisely. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Councilman Magazine?
You may wonder why I support this after being against so many expenditures.
The free yard?
We're all wondering.
You're all wondering? I don't any longer consider this a nice-to-have. Question of how you define it. A commitment was made to these people. This has been back and forth, God knows how many times. Keeping the gate up and locked really assures that at some point it's gonna come back again, over and over and over again, as long as the gate is there. I appreciate Phyllis Kern's opinion on this. Whether or not she'd be back, I don't know. But somebody's gonna bring this up again and we're gonna go through the same thing over and over again. And time is money. I mean, I don't think this is a nice-to-have. I think this is one that's necessary, given the circumstances.
I just wanna give these people who live there some peace of mind. That's all. They just want it to be over and they want something nice to look at. And I've been down there and I see where they live and I see what they have to look at. And, you know, it all comes down to what we want our neighborhood to look like. This is their neighborhood. So I wanna give them something nice for their neighborhood.
Councilman Tollis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. There's a commercial piece of property right next to this gate. And who knows what ultimately is gonna be developed there? But there may be opportunity down the line for that particular parcel to incorporate that corner and to beautify that corner with the development of that lot. There's a lot that could happen, you know. And while I wasn't here back eighteen years ago or twenty years ago when apparently this was agreed to be closed in perpetuity, from what I'm gathering, from what people are saying on the council, I just think that right now, again, we'll keep the gate locked. But I don't think there's a necessary need to spend another twenty-five thousand dollars right now. Let's wait till that parcel gets developed. Let's wait to see what happens with the old fire department when we ultimately are building a new one. What's gonna happen with that parcel? There's a lot that could happen over there. But with it being closed, I think that keeps everyone happy with what we originally agreed, right?
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second? I do. Okay, sorry. It's getting late. Brokaw?
Councilmember Yates?
Nay.
Councilmember DePorter?
Nay.
Councilmember Tollis?
Nay.
Councilmember, our Vice Mayor Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember Legay?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor four-three.
Democracy at work.
Okay. Thanks, Justin.
You're welcome.
Everybody's okay? It's number two? Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, Merry Christmas?
Are we at?
What? We're at the end. We're at?
Madam Mayor, at some point.
Summary?
A question for, whether it be for you or for Grady. And Ellen, you bring up a good point about what the consent agenda is for. Maybe we have a quick tutorial in our January meeting of what those items are and why we put them there, what the criteria is.
You bet.
I wanna give ultimate kudos to the council tonight. Really, really good discussion. And I appreciate the discussion. That was neat.
We'll be happy to do that at the January sixteenth meeting.
Good point.
There will not be a January second meeting.
I said January. I didn't say January second.
Yeah, just to remind everyone, there will not be a first meeting in January because that meeting would have been the day after New Year. And the staff would have had to do a lot of preparation while some of them are being taken vacations. And I think the council wants a little time off too. So it doesn't mean we're not gonna get everything done. It just means we'll be doing it just two weeks later. It looks like we're kind of a motion to adjourn. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor? Mayor, coun-